All right, well, hello, everyone. We're going to get started this January 4th, 2022. It is just 4:00 p.m., and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. And I wanted to welcome everyone. We do have two new counselors, so I wanted to welcome Megan Alter and Sean Harmson. Welcome to your first, well, maybe second official meeting. And also wanted to congratulate our new man pro temp, Megan Alter. So congratulations and looking forward to working with you in your new role. We are going to move on to the first item, which is to discuss meeting protocols. And I'll invite our city manager, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, good to be with you tonight. I'm going to be just highlighting the memo that is in your December 30th information packet. That's IP3, starting on page seven of that packet. I'm just going to kind of walk you through that, and then we'll be able to answer questions. Eric Goer's kind of co-authored this memo with me, and certainly the right one to ask any legal questions or if you need clarifications on legal requirements, I will certainly defer to Eric. But I will do the overview. So the memo first talks about public comment at city council meetings. I think you're all familiar with Iowa open meeting laws. The important takeaway there is that the case law, when it comes to open meeting laws, really just as a minimum requirement, says that the work of the government must be done in open session, right? So it's really the right for the public to observe the business meetings of the public. There are exceptions to that, namely the public hearings that you see on your agenda. So there are specific items in which you have to allow that public comment, and we note those on your agenda as public hearings. Those commonly are planning and zoning matters, public improvement projects. You'll be getting into the budget soon. That would require public hearing, multiple public hearings as well. So the minimum requirement is you allow public comment at those public hearings. You conduct those public hearings, but you don't have to for anything else. Now, Iowa City has a long tradition, well before my time, of inviting more public comment than is minimally required by the Iowa open meetings law. Historically, at least in recent history, the council has allowed public comment on any item. You can allow public comment on consent items before you vote or on any of the regular agenda items, regardless of whether there's a public hearing or not. You've also offered a public comment period, which allows anybody from the public to come and speak on non-agenda items. And that's not a requirement of the state law, but it's something that Iowa City has historically done. I would say Iowa City is probably at or near the top of the list when it comes to the most liberal public comment policies, right? You can pretty much come to the meeting and talk about anything you want within the rules that the council sets. That's not the norm for government agencies in Iowa. So again, I think historically Iowa City's been very proud to accept that level of public comment. You do, as a counsel, have the right to set rules. And quoting state code here, "Reasonable rules for the conduct of its meetings to assure those are orderly and free from interference or interruption by spectators." Okay, that's directly from code. In recent meetings, the council has tolerated interruptions and disruptions stemming from public comment opportunities. In the end, you have the ability to set the rules. When you want that public comment to occur, how you want it to occur, as long as you're setting those reasonable rules and applying them fair and equitably across the board, you have that ability to do that. You do that in limited fashion already, right? You set time limits. You have a time cutoff for public comment. After seven, you have the ability. So you have the ability to kind of hone in those rules in a manner that you see fit. To be clear, counsel, you can't cut off speakers because of the content of their speech, right? I mean, if you're going to invite public comments, you have to invite public comment regardless of whether you agree with that or not. So we're not talking about content-based restrictions here. It's more time and procedure and order that you'd be focused on. And really, I think that's the challenge for you and really for all government bodies, is you've got to find that appropriate balance between conducting your meeting. You know, you're all elected to conduct the business of the city. You need to focus on that. You need to decide if you can do that in the manner that you need to. You know, are you making the best decisions you can at 11:00 at night? That's a question you all have to answer. You have to balance that with the benefit of having the public be able to come before you and speak to agenda items or non-agenda items. We get in the memo to talk about disruptive individuals. And yes, they can be legally removed from the meeting if they're violating those rules and are disruptive. That includes individuals who refuse to stop speaking when their allotted time has ended, those that repeatedly speak off topic as determined by the mayor who's running the meeting, or those who interrupt the meeting from speaking from their seat. Now, again, I think it's important that, you know, you have to make sure those rules are well-publicized, well-known. There's various ways we do that. We put them on the agenda. We can put them on a screen. We can have handouts at the facility. They can be on the website. But as long as those rules are very clear, you do have the ability to trespass somebody who is being disruptive from your meetings. And I know many of you pay attention to government matters throughout the state of Iowa. You probably know that Des Moines City Council has grappled with this very issue, and they have indeed trespassed individuals from their council meetings. And I understand there has been convictions for those trespassing charges. So whatever you decide to do, we're here to help you craft those rules. I think, again, you need to kind of have that discussion on how you want your council meetings to run. But just know that the rules need to be adopted, they need to be published, and they need to be enforced evenly across the board. I did mention, if, you know, pre-COVID, there were additional opportunities that the council created for public comment. And that's just something I think I want you to consider, especially as a new council just getting started. Listening posts were more common, where councils would break up into pair of twos and take turns going throughout the community to get that public comment period. We've had counselors do door knocking in the past as part of their regular, not just in campaign mode, but throughout their tenure, attendance at city events, whether it's festivals, party in the parks, things like that. So don't just think of council meetings as your only opportunity to get public comment. Just keep in mind that pre-COVID, we did a lot more of that, and we could return to that, including offering those in a hybrid type of format for those that need that. So that's a good transition into hybrid meetings. That's the other reason that this item is on the agenda. Certainly, you've heard some public comment requesting hybrid meetings. I think Eric shared his opinion that the attorney's office does not believe virtual comments is legally required. It is not legally required. But you have the ability to do that, and we've done hybrid meetings during COVID or virtual comments during COVID. We can do that, whether that's in this facility or back in the council chambers. I can say, if you wanted to kind of extend that to all 20 of your boards and commissions, that would be pretty taxing on us, and I'd really need to think about the resources we would need to be able to do that. But to do that for the city council is certainly doable if you want to go down that path. And the last item I just wanted to touch on, because it's also been brought up several times in recent meetings, are the transcripts. I just want to make it clear that the full verbatim transcripts are not required by law. There are very, very few government entities in Iowa that do verbatim transcripts. It's a big undertaking. It's just a time-consuming type of effort. We've always done them, and we'll continue to do them. We do that through a part-time transcriptionist position. We had somebody working in the clerk's office for 20-plus years doing those that recently resigned that position, and Kelly's been working to get that filled. I believe that is filled now, and we're getting the new employee up to speed on producing those lengthy verbatim transcripts. You can imagine what a six-hour transcript looks like. Those are put out on our web for anybody to see. But we also have audio and video recordings of all our meetings, as you're aware. So I wanted to put that out there. That's a summary of the memo that was in, again, your December 30th packet. Any one of us are happy to answer questions. And again, based on your conversation tonight, we can facilitate some draft rules to bring forward, if that's the direction you want to go.
All right, thank you so much. And I guess I'll kind of just start this conversation. One, I really appreciate both the city attorney and our city manager for this memo. As we know, meetings have been a little challenging. And at least for me, the purpose of public meetings is really to allow for the public to be present and to hear the discussions that council is having. And also to make sure that we give opportunity for the public to come and express themselves. The challenge becomes when we have disruption, and that's what we're talking about today. What I would advise council to do during this time is to reflect on what's happened. I think we have real examples that we can really pinpoint. And then Mayor Pro Tem Sully, her last comments to us at her last meeting, that was pretty profound. So it was unfortunate that she left in that manner. So as we continue this conversation, I would just ask council to really prepare. The hope is that we prepare the best possible protocols that we can inform the public about ahead of time, give fair warning as to the consequences, because really, these meetings are for the good of everybody in our city.
Well, I'll speak first, I think, on the question of the hybrid meetings, because I think that was, you know, something that had been, we've been hearing from the community with regard to the hybrid meetings. And I do find it interesting that COVID, in a way, as, you know, challenging and impactful COVID has been, it's also revealed the fact that there are opportunities for the council to hear from the community through that virtual connection that does have significant advantages over attending the meetings in person in that it may be difficult for certain members of our community to actually access our in-person meetings for a whole variety of reasons. So my observation has been that attendance, so to speak, or participation at our meetings was enhanced by the hybrid meetings. So I would be in support of that. I don't feel it's necessary at all, the commissions that serve. I do feel that one improvement from what I've seen over the years I've been here is that they are now recorded. We have a video recording. And that's an advantage in that prior to that, when I would, and this would be more when I was not serving on council or any commission, be interested in the, you know, what actually took place at those meetings. Those meetings would be summarized, but you wouldn't have actual access to what was specifically said at those meetings. And so I think it's, as Jeff mentioned, in a way, it provides a way in which we can actually hear the verbatim discussion rather than having it filtered through someone's summary interpretation. So I think that's an advantage that we have, those recordings. I don't feel it's necessary to provide virtual access. I think insofar as many of these commissions make recommendations to council, where the council makes the final decision, there are opportunities now, particularly with the virtual, if we agree to provide it, for public comment at the council meetings if they should choose to do so. So that's my take on the hybrid meetings. I would say, and it is true, we've also had a tradition, and it is interesting just to hear about all the ways in which Iowa City has provided means of the community to let their voices be heard to the council. And, you know, some of those kind of fell by the wayside during COVID. Once we get back to a more kind of pre-COVID situation, you know, I would hope we would restart some of the things that are mentioned in the memo. And I would add to them the idea of town halls. That's something I've always felt would provide a different kind of opportunity for the council and staff to have a conversation with the community more in their location rather than one, you know, centered on City Hall, and that it would allow for a larger gathering. I think the best example that I can think of along these lines were the, what was it, the Speak Out events? Those, I thought, were extremely powerful and helpful for me in actually hearing those comments at those events and also just being there in this larger gathering, where also those who were in attendance could hear one another. I think oftentimes, there's this sense of, you know, we're trying to create opportunities for the community to speak to the council. I think it's important for the community to have opportunities to speak among themselves and hear what each other have to say. So the town halls, I think, are something that we might want to consider based on the experience we had with the Speak Out events. And then, of course, there's the rules. And, you know, in my time here, it is interesting that the disorderliness that we've been seeing is relatively recent. I mean, in my tenures on commissions and councils, you know, I think everyone understood the rules. We didn't have to explicitly state what the rules are, and I think it's really unfortunate that we may be in a situation where those rules do need to be stated.
People are insistent, and they don't necessarily understand unstatute rules. I hope you realize that.
So.
So you know, stopping.
Exactly what we're talking about.
You speaking makes you all upset.
Well, please, this is.
My community is not disruptive.
Please don't interrupt him.
Who said that? Colleen?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, I think clearly, we need to make it clear what the rules are.
Well, I mean, I think that we, I think of it, sorry, do you have more to go?
No, I'll leave it at that.
I'll sort of start from the end first, but in general, I view it as something of a decision tree. You know, if we, I'm in favor of doing hybrid, but when I look at the decision tree, the question is, hybrid? Then where do we do it? Do we do it here? Do we go back to chambers? If we go back to chambers, which I think most bodies around here are in their chambers, how do we sort of make sure that there aren't too many people in the chambers? Although I suspect that if we're hybrid, it will be easier for people to, or more people will stay home and comment from their home. But I think one reason, an additional reason to sort of have a set of whatever we decide the rules are and to state them clearly at every meeting, at the outset of every meeting, in addition to having them printed and in whatever ways, is we want to draw more people into local government. We want more people to attend. And when new people come who have no experience with it, they're going to be puzzled by some of the things that happen. No matter what we say, it may be, it'll seem strange that people comment during public comment when it's on topics that are not on the agenda, and we don't say anything in return because it hasn't been noticed as a topic for a public meeting. So I think, however we end up deciding what our rules are, I think it would be really useful to have a little, a text that gets read at the beginning of every meeting, essentially to explain in brief the rules and why they exist. And I have more, but I would like, I'd love to hear what other people have to say.
I think that Counselor Thomas spoke really well on the ability of having the hybrid meetings, and I agree with him. I think it would be important to do that, but I don't think it's intended to be offered to all 20 or so commissions. I think as they see fit, they can request it if they think they need it. But as he said, that the council's one making final decisions, and that's when it is important to have public comment on that final decision time. I do appreciate Eric and Jeff explaining to us some of the legal considerations for public participation in meetings. My thoughts are that it's a new year, a new council, and we need some new rules that we need to strictly follow. We need to structure the public comment opportunity time. It's really evident that we need to do that and have some structure and have rules and guidelines for comment times posted and followed. And that's a very good idea, Janice, about the beginning of the meetings. That's all.
I also agree with allowing for the hybrid meetings and appreciate Counselor Thomas, how you articulated that. And I think Counselor Taylor, you're right, that if other commissions think that they need that, that they can request that or try and make arrangements with staff for that, but not that we would mandate it. I do think that the parameters for what public comment is for and having those set forth really intentionally is critical. Because what I've experienced in my just now two years on council is a lot of people come to the meeting purporting to, you know, want a decision from this body on something that's not on the agenda, and we cannot do that. But we don't make it very clear in that exact moment. And we also don't respond to public comments. But we have, you know, we have particular items on which we're making determinations, where we have, let's say, an applicant who's asking for a specific thing from the city. That applicant engages in conversation with this body with questions and answers and with staff, and it's much more conversational. I can understand how that would be confounding to someone who, you know, maybe doesn't have maybe doesn't have experience with the process that we're undertaking or really what the business of the council meeting is. I really appreciate, John, what you said about, you know, other opportunities. It's hard when Iowa City has set a very high bar for public engagement and we're trying to find, you know, more, more ways to do it. But I think helping educate people that this is the time for the business of the council as noticed, as legally required to be noticed, and that we really are constrained in the actions that we can take at these meetings. And those actions are intended to be, and it's structured, you know, through the state code and through our ordinances, it's structured what we do at these meetings. And when we have so much engagement that is not on the topic of the business of the city that is before us and legally noticed, it's really hard for us to do our work. And I think that's a disservice to our constituents and to the city as a whole when we're kind of drawn, you know, into, into realms that we truly cannot address in that moment. So I just think as far as the parameters, establishing the rules, communicating them effectively, providing additional opportunities and just, you know, communicating the heck out of those, standing at that podium is probably the, one of the worst ways to actually ask us to do something, you know? So often, it's, we aren't the ones who have the expertise to execute on something that someone wants. It should go through staff first because they are the ones who do. Or if it's, a person would engage with an individual counselor who can then, you know, talk with colleagues, lobby colleagues, talk with staff, see if something can get on the agenda. That's the way sort of the business unfolds. And again, I don't blame anyone for failing to know that because it's not really laid out in one place. As far as the actual rules, I mean, I'm in favor of the continuing with having kind of an end time for the public comment period and having the three-minute limit. I don't think we should stop having public comment on all items. I think that is a long tradition. I think we should cut the mics at the end of three minutes and do that consistently. I think the technological option for a hybrid meeting makes that maybe even easier than it does here. Yeah, that, that would be kind of what I would suggest for those parameters.
If I may, I want to piggyback on some of what Counselor Burgas said, but from a slightly different tack, as I am new, sitting in this place, looking out. But I've been out there at many meetings and over the several, past several years, have been in the audience or been at the podium to make public comment. And it's only over the course of many years of witnessing and kind of figuring it out organically, what the process is. And I would completely concur that actually coming to council oftentimes is when the decisions are being made about things that have been in conversation for quite some time or that have become a matter of urgency that needs to be decided upon quickly. And even then, there needs to be public input. And for that, I actually very much appreciate the way Iowa City has allowed for that. What I have noticed as someone who has been both pre-COVID and during COVID, throughout Zoom meetings, and then now as well, in the midst of it, is that my deep concern in my observation is that, in fact, the passion that I'm seeing, coming from public comment, where there's a repetitiveness and a real desire to be heard, redam the rules, is unfortunately not having the effect that is desired. I feel that, and what I have seen, is that there are people who are now disallowed from actually talking about items that they wish to. There are people who actually are probably feeling intimidated to be able to speak out. And so I feel that there is a disservice in place at current, at the current moment, because I do agree with absolutely what Counselor Weiner is saying. We want to draw more people in, we want more people engaged in the process. We want more people engaged and committed to work being done. And I do recognize that that has been very much the impulse of many of the people who have come before council. However, I feel that it is also very evident that that has gone to a place where it's more disruptive than helpful. And so I think to do anything in terms of saying, here how, here's how this works, maybe even something like a, a quick cheat sheet, a one-pager that says, here's, like, by the time we've gotten to council, here's how the decisions, you know, here's oftentimes how this works, right? This is the end of the discussions in some ways, or this is the next process towards getting to a step. But that things cannot be done with the snap of fingers. And I think that the rules that have been suggested in place already by other counselors are good means towards that end.
I also want to agree. I think hybrid just makes sense. I think that's, that's something we, we should do as, as quickly as practically possible. And prioritizing the city council meetings, I think, as other counselors have mentioned, does also make the most amount of sense. And then, you know, possibly building from there. But in terms of resources and priorities, I think, starting with the council meeting. In terms of location, I know that's been brought up and discussed about a little bit. I don't know if there is any sort of a logistical or technological reason why the council chambers, the regular council chambers would have a greater or lesser ability to do that than here. Hopefully, if that's an issue, I think we also have to balance the COVID, you know, which is, I just read an article today, all 50 states now have uncontrolled community spread. And so, you know, we're kind of balancing that. This is a bigger space, we are keeping people safer in this space. And I think if we institute hybrid, we may increase that because people will be able to participate without coming. You know, we may be back in a hybrid as a council at some point in the next, you know, couple of months, potentially. So that may be a self-solving problem for at least a little while, whether we like it or not. So I guess, you know, we're all kind of waiting to see what happens with that. And I agree, our meetings are to be the business. There are a lot of people who have a lot of important issues to come before the council. And they all deserve to have our time and attention paid to them. And, you know, huge, huge proponent of First Amendment stuff, but also recognizing that time, place, and manner are very critical to the, you know, what we can say about when people are making comments. And so that's, that's sort of media law 101 when it comes to First Amendment and free speech and, and open, openness and everything else. And so we do have an ability to talk to the issues of time, place, and manner. And I, I think in order to have the greatest amount of total public input overall, I think is a, is a goal that we should strive for without trying to be like overly heavy-handed or draconic.
I think that one of the, whatever we decide ultimately are, are essentially standing rules for public comment, they need to apply exactly the same to people who are in person as to those who comment virtually. So for example, I mean, I'm not sure what the, what the statute says, but I would like to hear a name and a city. I don't care about an address. I would just like, and I will listen to people from Davenport and Des Moines or whoever they are, but I think that we, as elected officials representing the city of Iowa City, also deserve to know whether the people who are, who are commenting are actually our voters and who actually live here, in addition to listening to people who may be commenting who are not from here.
So I think I hear, I think how I want to go about this is maybe just kind of breaking it down a little bit and taking it section by section in a way. So it seemed like the easiest one, based on the comments, is there's full support for hybrid. Maybe the question becomes, do we do it in this space? And I don't know if staff is, you know, prepared to maybe talk about, is this, if it's happening here or in city hall, does it, is one more advantage than the other?
Well, number one, we can do it in either location. So it's not an issue of, we can't do it here, we have to do it back there. It's more convenient to do it back in the chambers. We do have the built-in infrastructure. And you see kind of the, the setup that we have here. And this, this is kind of bigger than hybrid, hybrid meetings, but, you know, this room basically stays like this. So we've taken this room out of service for the senior center, which is okay because they don't have a ton of traffic in the building throughout COVID. But they'd certainly love to have that back. And, and plus, you can see just the, the cable operation is, is much more extensive in, in this particular location. So it's more convenient to be back. But as, as Counselor Harmson said, there's some COVID trade-offs because it's a tight space. And even pre-COVID, we had a lot of meetings that were over capacity in, in that space. It was not uncommon sight to see people spilled out into the, the city hall lobby.
I did have a question. I know that COVID is certainly taking its own turn of events here across the nation and even the world. When, is there a point where we could define when it's impossible or impractical to meet in person? Or is that something we believe we would just rely on public health, kind of the?
And I, I would think that we should talk to Johnson County Public Health and ask what the, what, what they're, essentially what the, what the breakers are, where. But if I understand the, the memo correctly, Eric and Jeff, regardless of what happens, because the governor's, because of the, the, because of what the governor's emergency proclamation currently does not say, at least four of us would need to be in person.
Well, so to answer the mayor's question first as to who kind of makes the determination about whether it would be impossible or impractical to have a meeting, that, that's our call, your call specifically. It was just much easier when the governor just said, you know, flat out, for everyone, I'm declaring a state emergency and so forth. And, and thus, you know, everyone is relieved of the response, you know, of the restrictions of, I think it's 21.8, if I recall, Iowa Code Section 21.8, I think. If the mayor, I'm sorry, if the governor does not return to that kind of proclamation, then each city would have to kind of justify its, on its own. That is, obviously, if we have a hybrid meeting where we have at least four members of council physically present here, then we're fine because that's all that's required. But if the council wishes to go to a virtual meeting that is not hybrid in the sense that there's no live component, then we would need to justify by impossible or impractical. And then I would agree with Counselor Weiner, you know, we would want to get all the best information from Johnson County Public Health and what, you know, CDC and, and all the other things. And then we would be able to, at some point, make the assertion, we believe it's now impossible or impractical to have in-person meetings. And consequently, we're going to move to entirely virtual meetings.
Thank you. So certainly, I think the hybrid can take place. I, I think it would probably be worth talking about if we feel that we want to do it in the senior center or if we want to do it at city hall. Right now, at least in my, when I look at COVID, it's, it's spiraling out of control. And so we would certainly want to make sure that the public is have the safest options to be a part. Is there any consideration, will we consider, maybe thinking about doing it in council chambers, having maybe four counselors and we rotate? And now, I know that the mayor would need to be present as well as the mayor pro tem. And then it would be rotation of two counselors. With staff present, it would be my, unless we want to have staff not present on the dais and, or they can be in the audience as well.
My concern wasn't necessarily the number of us that were there, but the number of, of persons, members of the community that would want to be there. As you'd said, there, there were times, many times, when it was packed. That was even, it was obviously pre-COVID. So, and here, it's so nicely spaced, and I think people feel safer coming here than they would in, in that cramped Harvard Hall. Although I'd love to get back to there, but that's, that would be my concern, is more the public interest.
I agree with Counselor Taylor. That was my thought, too, that it's as much about the size of the audience area as it is about the room of the dais, so.
I mean, on this, I mean, and Counselor Thomas likes to talk about pilot programs. I mean, that, that's something we could, we could see how it works once we're, once we're in hybrid. If most of the public ends up being online, then we can reconsider, for example.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I personally would like to remain here, especially with the level of, you know, the, the spread. And then, yeah, we go hybrid here and just see what happens. See how that affects things if, if we see that maybe we won't go over capacity at city hall if, if we go hybrid. Just, you know, play it by ear.
So I'm seeing not enough hits. So we'll go hybrid here and we'll just see how that works. And my assumption is our next meeting, is that something that city staff can look into and?
We'll do our best to make that happen, yes.
All right, great. Okay, so standard rules is, is the other thing that I heard. I did want to go back to something that was stated in the memo, and I'm sure it has a citing. But it, a, a part of the discussion that we need to have is rules will be created to really guide the meetings to be free from interference or interruptions by spectators. And that is Iowa Code. That was cited. So a part of what we need to, you know, determine is what would be stated, and then what would be the, kind of the next step. We do have the rules currently for the public comment time. It goes until 7:00 PM, unless we need to do a minimum of 30 minutes. And the mayor reserve the rights to switch from three minutes based on how many individuals desire to speak. So we do have that already present. I know that this was a huge discussion that we had last year when we put this into place. And so, at least for me, what I would like to just mention to the council is it would be very helpful that while we're, if we are, you know, gonna, if, if we're going to end at seven because we've given 30-plus minutes, or if I have to, you know, maybe we didn't finish with our consent agenda until 7:45 or 6:45, that I will make the announcement that we'll go 30 minutes so at 6:15, that council would allow me to make that statement. And of, of course, if there is a need to extend it, oftentimes if someone is needing, you know, someone to interpret for them, I automatically will extend, extend it. Maybe it's helpful if, you know, I just state, you know, after that, that, you know, I'll extend it, you know, two more minutes or whatever the situation may be. But I think it'd be very helpful if council make sure that we're abiding by this. Because there has been times where, you know, council has wanted to, you know, allow everybody to speak and they'll, you know, just say, let everybody speak. And, I mean, if this is what we're going to do, then this is the charge that I've been given as the mayor. And I just want to make sure that we're all comfortable with the 30 minutes, the 7:00 PM, I would just want to check in.
I don't think, I mean, for me personally, that all makes sense. What I would see, I wouldn't see anything that we're stating in terms of giving an overview of how council functions, of how public comment is going to function, what the rules of the road are. None of that should take away from your prerogatives during the meeting. But I think, but I would, I would still favor, and maybe staff can help us, craft a statement to be, that, that doesn't even have to be you. You could rotate it among counselors, that, that could be read at the beginning of every meeting, sort of explaining the rule, essentially the rules of the road for the meeting. Nothing taking away from your prerogatives based on who's here, how long, how many, how many commenters there are and so forth.
Okay, great.
I'll just throw out a, a thought here. In terms of how we communicate that, Mayor, you've been, you know, very adept and successful at, at your. at, at your recordings over certain issues, you know, your public, kind of a public, what's the word I'm looking for? You know, just some sort of public announcement. I'm wondering if, if like a, a pre-recording of the rules is something that you could provide? You know, it would, you know, working with City Channel, where it would just be shown at our meetings, at the, at the beginning of the meeting. You know, welcome to the Iowa City Community, City Council, and, you know, you would go through what the rules are. Kind of like when you're on an airplane or something.
That's what first came to mind. That's, that's actually a great idea, John.
And, you know, here's, here are the rules. And it would be pre-recorded, so, and it would be visual. It could be something. And recorded, it could be something we put up on YouTube or whatever. But, you know, that's, that's a skill you have that I'm thinking maybe worthwhile trying it anyway and see, see if it's successful.
I think it speaks to Counselor Weiner's comment about, we do have new timers that come to council that really don't know, you know, what's happening. And sometimes they can be intimidated. Or become fearful and, and not want to express, you know, their thoughts and their feelings. And so I do see, you know, whether it's a pre-recorded or we read something in, in real time, I do see the necessity of doing, of making sure that the public is aware every meeting. And I think we can, we may not need to determine that now, how we do that. But I do think that we need to maybe, is there anything specific, a, a, a specific rule? I, I, I do think that we need to talk about what are next steps, when? As, and I, I'm trying, I'm going to try to find that code again. It's right up here. I had it highlighted. So, you know, when disruption includes those who refuse to stop speaking, when their allotted time has ended, those that repeatedly speak off topic as determined by the mayor, and those who interrupt the meeting by shouting out and interjecting outside public comment periods. So these are the things that really refer to Iowa Code Section 21.7, where it says, you know, the council has the right to create and enforce reasonable rules for the conduct of its meetings to ensure those meetings are orderly and free from interference or interruption by spectators.
So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's really important that we, we highlight the, the, the parameters in as positive a way as we can, including that, that requiring that people be on topic. You know, so if it's about the intersection of Scott and Rochester, it needs to be a comment directly about the intersection of Scott and Rochester, and that's.
I think basically, we're just talking about asking folks to be courteous. Courteous to the council, courteous to other members of the audience.
I think more, more pointedly, for those who engage with us with the intention of disruption rather than the intention, rather than the intention of anything substantive relating to the business of the city, you know, they probably want nothing more than to be arrested. And it may surprise no one that I'm, you know, I would not be in favor of forcibly removing someone with, using police from our chambers unless there was some imminent threat of violence. That's where I am. I think maybe we could engage other members of the public to, you know, surround the person and boo at them or shush them or remove them from the, the meeting room. Yeah, it really is a matter of common courtesy and we've lost that. And we, we don't have good ways of engaging civility when it will not be reciprocated.
As, as someone mentioned on, at least on, on the hybrid portion of it, we will have the ability to cut mics if we need to, just basically at the time limit.
I, I do wonder if, if we created rules, and I hear what Counselor Burgess is saying from her perspective. If we created rules and there was someone that was disruptive, I guess my question, and, and it was continuous, my question would be, can we then, what would be the, what would be an, an option for the individual to not attend in person, but virtually? Or, I, I know that it can be taken to, you know, they can be charged outside of the council meeting for something. I just need to know what, what, what options would be there.
Sure. So the options would be first, just removal, no arrest. Just, you know, you need to go now and be trespassed for that meeting. You may not return tonight for this meeting. You know, see you next, you know, meeting if, if they desire. And then beyond that, as you say, if they were to come back in after being trespassed, then, you know, they could be charged. Or obviously, we could have, you know, folks at the door to prevent re-entry. Although, again, you'll have to make a political decision about if you want to do that. But if there are continued violations, they can be banned in increasing periods of time. That is, you know, a one-meeting ban, that kind of thing. And moving forward, you would certainly never be in a position of saying you can never attend a city council member, or a meeting again, anything like that. And of course, it has to be responsive to actual disruptive behavior, not just the anticipation of disruptive behavior, just actual disruptive behavior, that kind of thing. But here's, I guess I'll kind of address the flip side of the coin too. Is if you have folks who are violating the rules, sometimes blatantly, and the council takes no steps, then it's difficult to tell other members of the public who wish to comment and are doing so out of good faith that they need to adhere to the rules too. And in theory, there could even be discrimination claims, you know, about either based on the content of their speech versus what someone else is saying, or perhaps they're a member of another protected class. I mean, the real key here is you got to swing a level sword. You know, whatever your rules are, you really need to mean it, you need to enforce it against all people equally. Because again, I think your intent is that you want to hear maximum public engagement from people who wish to actually discuss matters of importance or to either them, or matters of importance that are on the city council agenda, but not purposely disruptive comments or comments that are purposefully violating your rules. I mean, there is a sweet spot there, I think. And, and just because, you know, you're going to impose rules and mean to enforce them, doesn't mean you're not encouraging public comment. In fact, I think the opposite is true. I think you would encourage more members of the public to come out and speak to you if they knew they didn't have to kind of wait through hours and hours of disruptions or the possibility of being shouted down by other members of the public who are present, that kind of thing. So I guess my point is, there are a, a number of kind of intermediate steps that the council could choose to take instead of just hauling people off in handcuffs, you know, at the first offense or, or something like that.
I mean, in, in some places, the councils have adjourned at least temporarily, no?
I'm sorry?
I think there have been, not here, but in some circumstances, councils have adjourned at least temporarily.
Yeah, there have been circumstances in which they've taken a break to restore order. You know, I mean, I think Des Moines, in, in speaking with the Des Moines city attorney, they had an occasion where they had, I think, 10 to 15 police officers come in and they had to clear the room and, and so forth. And, and, and obviously, no one wants that. But, you know, circumstances were present such that the council there felt like they needed to do that so that they could engage in the, you know, public business that they were elected to conduct.
What I've been hearing, sort of as a pattern emerging, is that it is about finding that right balance. And I completely agree with the notion of saying, we want the rules in place in order to be able to encourage people to speak and to participate on matters that matter to them, that matter to the city, and that we need to figure out the right ways to be able to allow maximum people to be engaged. And that's one part of the sweet spot. The other, and I would agree completely with Counselor Burgess, is that I'm very, very wary of arrests. Because I, I think that that swings the pendulum too far in terms of saying, we want orderly discussion. But I think that that could be problematic. I'll just leave it at that, for a number of reasons. So I, I, I like what I'm hearing about that there needs to be sort of a standard sense of the rules. And I do think that the mayors and what council, previous council had worked so hard towards saying, here's what makes sense. But then really, we need to abide by it consistently, clearly. And I go back again in a really practical sense of like, for those who are either new to coming to council or haven't been in a while, or just even say, I'm not sure what's going on because of this new space. There could be any reasons, any number of reasons, but to have something that is done in, in advance of the meeting, every meeting, to explain, here's how this works. And to a certain extent, perhaps, here's why this works. So at any rate, I, I'm sure that what I'm doing is just simply summarizing what a number of people have already said here. But it, it feels like we just really have to maintain an awareness of how to keep that balance in terms of encouraging people who want to speak, whether, you know, we're not here to just hear praise. Nobody comes onto council to expect that. But there are nuggets of things that we need to hear. And there are details that we need to hear, but we need to be able to allot the time and the, the time for myriad voices to speak on all the issues that are on the agenda, so.
So what I would like to, and I appreciate everyone's comments. What I would like to know is how are we planning? Or what would be the proposal since I'm hearing from two right now, no police interference? But how do we propose that we will, you know, regain order? So that we have meetings that are free from interference or interruptions by spectators? As well as people stop when the mayor has stated, your time is up?
To clarify, at least I had heard Counselor Burgess talking about arrests, and that was what I was referring to.
Arrest?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I don't want it to get to a
None of us wanted to get to that point.
Situation, but, at all. But it may be that, oh, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. And I think that the question really is, what will be the, what is the tool that we have? What is, if, if, if you don't, if the disorderly conduct continues, what will we do consistently? At least for me, if we're, you know, thinking, in the meeting, it is happening. I can't really, you know, redirect in the behavior. We certainly could do, you know, a warning to the individual outside of council, an official warning. The next time it happens, you know, we can go through and really spell out was, you know, some of the things that we're discussing here today. Then the next time they, it is performed, we go through the meeting. And then we do a suspension. If they attend the meeting, that one meeting, and do the same thing, then we will have outside of this meeting, a trespass order.
I had a question as far as maybe Eric could answer this is, like if you as the mayor were to, you know, do your gavel and just say you are out of order, you need to leave the podium or you need to quit speaking. And also, talking about Des Moines and them temporarily adjourning, we can't do that every time, every meeting. That would be ridiculous. I mean, it, it, if, if it's really totally a disruptive meeting at the time, I can see that and we could very easily adjourn from, from the room for temporary. But it's not a long time action, and I agree also. I, I would not want a police presence. I, I don't think that's helpful at all.
What I'm, at least from my purview, I'm, I'm suggesting that even though the mayor will, you know, kind of redirect, give warning, out of order, that it is going to, you know, we don't, I, I wouldn't have to become in a confrontation. I'd just state, you know, if, if you continue, you will be cited for trespass, whatever step we're on. And then, it's something that will take place outside of this meeting. So every comment after that, if they keep getting up, at least from my perspective, I just give them their two, three minutes and, and this hap, and we'll deal with it after the meeting. Because we have the entire public that we're dealing with, that we need to make sure that they have opportunities to get up, as well as people that is going to be hybrid.
So you're wanting people to press an answer?
I don't, I don't have a good answer other than, aside from the cutting mics both here and there. Obviously, voices carry and we can, we can, and we can still hear voices at a certain point. People are out of order, then we need to be, tell them they're out of order and, and the, this, the part of the memo that struck me, that I also think we need to put in our, somehow into our intro, is the, the, the notion of what the requirement, the actual requirements of state law are. And that because we want to hear from people, we are, we're going, we are, we are far exceeding the state law requirements to sort of, that's probably not stated that well, but basically to frame what we're doing for, for the public in addition to explaining the rules of the road.
Mayor, could we also clarify, I think Eric had brought this up once, the difference between public comment time and public hearing time? There seems to be some confusion on that.
Sure. So public hearings are those opportunities for the public to comment to you that are statutorily required. The memo mentions a number of circumstances in which that takes place. And that's the occasion in which the mayor bangs his gavel and says he, you know, he's opening a public hearing and then bangs his gavel and says he's closing a public hearing. Those are required. We need to do those. Everything else, you know, we do not need to do. And it's just been, you know, by the grace of this council that the public can be heard on, for example, every single other item, not on the consent agenda. So that's the biggest difference. Am I answering your question?
Yes, but, but regarding that particular item that we're on, where it says public hearing, say a rezoning or sewer line or something of that nature. That topic is what we're required to allow public comment on, or the public hearing.
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
And at, at least today, and I don't think anyone is suggesting that we not allow the opportunities for public comment after each agenda item or during, each agenda item or during the open public comment set time. I just know that we have all witnessed in real time where the mayor has stated they're out of order. The mayor has tried to redirect, ask for compliance. And again, Mayor Pro Tem Salie, her words resonate with me. And if we don't have something in the toolbox where, i- if we think we can just cite these codes, which disruptors know, then we will not be able to conduct the business to the best of our abilities. Having an hour and a half or hour twenty minutes so far that I've noted, added to an agenda where there are still people in the community. an agenda where there are still people in the community that want to speak on a topic, council also has the ability, we need to be able to focus in on the items that are before us, you know, and these are, these are real, you know, these are huge decisions that we make, no matter what it is. So, that's where I am. I feel like we have to, either, we're just gonna really let things continue the way that they are, or we're gonna have to have some consequences. And I propose that we, first time, do the warning in the meeting, send a letter afterward, if we can find their address, hand them a letter, state it in public comment. Second time it happens, note that they will be, need to leave, they won't leave, they will continue, and because they won't leave, I think that's where we give a trespass for at least one meeting, or we say, you're not allowed to go to the next meeting, or something. And then, if you come to the next meeting, you can come to meetings after that, but if you come to the next meeting, you'll be considered to be trespassing, and then, if they trespass, they trespass, and then that'd be a matter for law enforcement. I just don't know how we can get beyond where we are today, if we do not have some clear consequences created.
I agree, I mean, there needs to be, it's how we define this boundary, or respond to incidents, you know, is reminding me a little bit of what we've gone through on our policing matters, where, you know, we've tried to identify other, other means of community engagement, short of bringing a sworn officer into the picture. And I'm, I'm wondering aloud if, if a similar approach could be taken here, and I don't know what that translates to necessarily, but I'm wondering if, you know, we hired some new staff, new personnel, to address issues which were not criminal behavior, but disruptive behavior, shall we say, who were more trained in engaging with individuals in a way which would help de-escalate, rather than escalate that, that interaction. But this is, surely there must be ways in which we can try to capture what Counselor Burgess is trying to get at, which I tend to agree with. I don't, I don't want to, I want this to be done in a way which is civil, the response is civil and respectful, while at the same time, address your concerns. There clearly need to be, we need to have a clear response to, should the behavior persist? I'm personally just not clear what, you know, I hear what you're saying in terms of, well, we're gonna issue warnings, and so on and so forth, but I guess...
In hopes that it wouldn't get to punitive, or...
Right, I know, I understand, sort of trying to, sort of create a, you know, a progressive discipline approach, and I'm just asking the question if there might be other ways of doing a progressive approach, short of bringing in law enforcement.
Do we have civil infraction authority for that kind of behavior?
None springs to mind, I can, I mean, I don't, I don't think it would be a nuisance action or anything, but I could certainly explore that.
So, just, so it wouldn't be a criminal matter, but it would still be something enforceable as clearly a violation of the city's law, which I think that's what we're talking about, that's why we're citing code when we're going through these, these boundaries and these parameters, but, you know, I personally, again, just for myself, draw that line on the criminal and law enforcement engagement, but if there's a civil means to still have some consequences, I'd entertain that.
So, I guess the, I guess at least the question that remains now is, do we want to learn from legal in a future meeting, what that looks like? Because I don't think you have the answer right now.
I'm sorry, I don't, but I guess I would, as I'm quickly thinking a little bit more about it, I'm not sure why we couldn't create such a thing, which would be an ordinance change, of course, but I suspect that that might be possible. I think that's an aside, I mean, I think the rest of the rules that you've discussed and so forth would need to be implemented, that's just a resolution, so that's a single meeting, but I can, you know, concurrently explore Counselor Burgess's idea about a civil infraction.
I also think, Mayor, that point that you had of making sure that the council is supporting you, when that, you know, sort of when we get to that line, is important. I don't know the best way to kind of codify that for ourselves, like if there's a, you know, particular script that you have, that's very, very clear to the people who are speaking, and to us, like, look, you've hit the line, for sure. Because my experience in those moments has been, you know, it is kind of flexible, and we've, you know, tried to accommodate different ways, and I think it would be helpful if we had some like, oh, okay, here's the, some signal, so that we understand and can be unified in that, yeah, 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 this is the boundary.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe that is the gavelling, you know, the most obvious.
Yeah, at least what comes to mind for me is, you know, if, if, if one, if we have someone that is continuously coming up, you know, two, three times, that's kind of the, where it is not on topic, that's kind of the trigger, you know, so we can probably identify what is that trigger, to be consistent. Also, you know, sometimes we've had individuals, although I think a lot of individuals, if they know, they'll, they'll, they'll have a presentation that's five minutes, and they'll have two people present. Sometimes that's not the situation, and so, even though I try to, you know, continuously talk, at least, you know, in the beginning, maybe that could be a part of, you know, they do it that one time, it's not a frequent occurrence, I mean, they would just get the warning, but I do agree that it needs to be very consistent as to what we do. At least for me, just thinking about it on the, on the, in the moment, it would be an individual thing, so if an individual, you know, in any two consecutive meetings is going over time, you know, that's where, you know, we can put some of these parameters in place. If an individual is going up two times or more, and talking about items not on the topic, that can be the trigger as well.
That brings up a question to me, and I hesitated to even bring it up, but what about those folks we've had that say, I give my three minutes to this person, so that person can have six minutes, is, are we going to allow that? What are we going to do about those situations?
And at least for me, in those situations, personally, I think someone could give their time up, at least in my mind, so if someone has come and said, you know, they gave thirty seconds, and they're gonna give the remainder of their time to the next person, and add time, at least for me, it just seemed like there's going to be a presentation by someone that might be more able to articulate, in that short amount of time, you know, the needs for those two individuals. And in those moments, I have stated, I think, and I can only recall one, where I've kind of combined the time, you know, but...
You know, there's certainly situations where one can't communicate fully ones, what one wants to say to the council in three minutes, so I think there, it's a judgment call, but it does seem that, I certainly can recall P and Z meetings, where I might himself have been in the, in the public comment period, and asking for more than three minutes. I mean, there are just certain, certain types of issues, which three minutes is just not sufficient, so it's, I think, particularly with those things where you're in a public hearing circumstance, you know, some flexibility in terms of what the limits are, is important.
You know, I think the challenge there is because, it becomes where individuals that typically attend our meetings, or have some knowledge of our meetings, they really do know how to give it to someone else, whereas other individuals, you know, they may just continue on. I don't know if anyone has any, I mean, we can certainly maybe edit the words, because currently it says, the mayor reserves the right to reduce the three-minute period based on the number of individuals desiring to speak. I don't really want to get in the area of individually extending time. I think in certain circumstances, like I mentioned, if someone says, I'm gonna, you know, give my time to them, you know, do we, we're not gonna let three people, you know, but I think there could be some, you know, discretion, discretionary language, but it needs to, you know, I just want to make sure that legal would be comfortable with whatever that discretionary extension language will be.
Yeah, I mean, again, kind of going back to the idea of swinging a level sword, I mean, as long as, you know, you can distinguish it in a content-neutral way, then, then I think you're okay, as opposed to, I don't like you, the speaker, I don't like what you're saying to us, you know, that kind of thing.
True.
And know that those allegations may come, whether they're true or not, and so, that's something we would, that's just has to be prepared to identify, I'm giving this person extra time, because, whatever that is, you would probably want to articulate it at the time.
Absolutely, yep. So, I think we can probably deal with that, that Counselor Thomas just mentioned, to a certain degree, and if we, we can work on language a little bit, and propose it outside of this meeting. I do want to kind of wrap up this topic, but what are we thinking for, so we, hybrid meeting, we're gonna go, hopefully, next meeting? Standing rules, so, maybe we can work offsite, if council gave, if council is comfortable with that, where I would propose, at least three of us kind of work on this, some language with staff, maybe pull a few things from experience. I think it would be great to have Mayor Pro Tim, and if I would be so direct, I would, I personally would like to invite Counselor Weiner, if she would accept to be on, on that, in that conversation, if council is okay with that, and then we'll kind of work with some staff, work with staff. And I think at least what we'll be pointing out is, what are some of the, the key things that we want scripted, and then bring it back to a future meeting.
That sounds good. I wanted to add one thing that, on the topic that we haven't really elaborated on, and that's other, so much, and that's other interactions with the public, especially in the COVID era, there's, we could give, I just wanted to throw there, we could give consideration to doing a few virtual listening posts, and figure out when it would be good to schedule those, so that people don't have to come, they can talk to us about anything they want, essentially, at those, and get that, give, sort of, get back to a sense of normalcy, even though we're not in person.
I'm seeing some nodding of heads, and I know that Counselor Thomas talked about town hall meetings, maybe listening polls, virtual options, or even hybrid, well, I don't know if a hybrid option would be really possible, if we're going into certain, you know, certain places, but, because people don't have like, the fancy TV and cameras, and, you know, it becomes a little challenging to hear, but why don't we, if, I see some shaking of heads for listening post, maybe we can go ahead and try some, do we want to go virtual first, or in person? Virtual?
I'd say virtual at this point.
Seeing some virtual, we'll, we'll try it for the first, we'll go quarterly, and then if we need to adjust, we can. And with that being said, we should probably identify who's gonna be the first two.
I signed up for one with Mayor Pro Tim Salee that we never got to do because of COVID, so I would love the chance to do that.
All right, who wants to partner with Counselor Burgess?
I would be happy to.
Great, there we have it, alas, all right, we'll, we'll start there, we'll go and collect the next two, after we kind of get a report of how that went. All right, let's move, anything else that we need to do with the meeting protocols? All right, we'll continue the discussion at our next work session. We're gonna go on to info packet, discussion, December, oh, sorry, we're gonna go to clarification of agenda items.
I'll just note, I'll be recusing myself from the South District Smed again, Mayor.
Right.
And actually, I just got advice from the city attorney, that I do not need to recuse myself, because I'm just a resident there, and I have not been involved in anything, nor do I have property concerns, or anything like that, so I will be a voting member on it.
I just wanted to let people know that I do live in the South District, I campaigned
as a proponent for the Smed, but it's, there's nothing that's blocking me from ethically voting.
Anything else from the formal agenda? All right, December 16th, info packet?
I hope we can spend a few minutes on the recommendation from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, that's in their December 2nd minutes, which is IP 5 of the December 16th meeting. I think this ties into the few, maybe a future work session topic, hopefully, but I'd like to just get us started on nailing down the parameters for direct payments to individuals from our emergency allotment of ARPA funds. I think it's been a while, last conversation we had about that was when we had our joint meeting with the supervisors in November, I think, so it would be good for us to commit to nailing down what Iowa City is willing to do, so I kind of have thoughts on that, if people are willing to engage in that a little bit now, in relation to this recommendation, or however you'd like to proceed, Mayor.
Yeah, I think, at least for me personally, I think we can have a discussion on it. The, I guess the question that we'll have to consider is, the county and where they are, which, we don't, I mean, we kind of know what, where they are, but I feel like we would need their official stance, so that we're not just interpreting inappropriately where they are.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, I think we have a few different options in how to approach it, and my, my thinking is that we consider articulating... And my, my thinking is that we consider articulating our priorities. Like, let's say, there's several different things we've talked about, a dollar amount which needs to be decided as far as an overall allocation. At our joint meeting, we said we want to work with the county, want to have administration of kind of one program, I believe, we've decided that. So what is Iowa City's commitment to that program? And then how, what does that mean as far as how the funds are dispersed? I am hesitant, or I would urge us to consider not waiting for the county to fully articulate what their logistical, you know, sort of their parameters, as well as the logistics of how the program will work. And that we decide on our priorities and an overall dollar amount, and then our priorities for any things like eligibility or, you know, dollar amount per person, that kind of thing, and communicate that with the total allocation, with the understanding that the county will still be the ones implementing the final sort of rules for the program. My concern is that if we wait until they decide exactly what it's going to look like, then we're coming back here in February or March and saying, well, we, we kind of like this, but we didn't like that. And, well, I'm, it's too bad they didn't take this into account, whereas it, you know, we could articulate those things now and with an understanding it'd be priorities rather than strict conditions for the allocation of funds.
So if I understand you correctly, it's not that you're wanting to move without the county.
Right.
It's really to kind of, let's say what we're financially going to do and put our priorities there. At least for me, what would make sense right now, since we don't fully know all the parameters of how many individuals we will be talking about, I think we can, at least personally, I think that we can state that the city will, you know, make up the difference for our residents or individuals within, that live in the city of Iowa City, up to $2,000. Now, that could be 600, that could be 1,000 because they haven't made their final plan. And, and I think a part of it is, we want to make sure that the community knows that we are committed to this. And so we might be taking, we're, we're moving forward with some unknowns, but I also feel like these unknowns are within a financial obligation that we could make. You know, we can say, you know, each individual dollar amount, you know, up to 2,000 for Iowa City, and we will make up the difference. At least that would be my take, if that's what you're wanting to get at.
You know, and I'm sorry to interject, I, I thought that it was going to be a little bit of a clarification of what was going on in the minutes and so forth. And I, I think if we're going to start talking about numbers and so forth of what cities are going to agree to do, that, that's probably not enough notice on the agenda item here tonight. And so I'm hesitant to allow too much discussion about what individual council members would allow for dollar amounts. Sorry.
I understand that. I'm not interested in talking dollar amounts. I just, I, I just wanted, if it's legitimate, to say that what, one of the things that I hear councillor Burgess saying is essentially, in, in the next meeting, what we need to do is articulate the things that we want the county to take, that we suggest the county take into consideration without mandating it, so that we can actually influence their discussion when they're putting together their program, rather than coming in afterwards.
So then, go right ahead, please.
Oh, I was just going to say, I, I very much appreciate the idea that whatever we can do to get this moving, to get people the help they need. I know from the, the minutes of the TRC meeting, you know, they had hoped that we could get something into people's pockets, you know, by Christmas, which would have been great, didn't happen for, for lots of reasons. But if we can do something now to help get that process moving, I think that's, that's a laudable goal that we should be working towards. So, and if that's the mechanism, then I would, I would like to see some, you know, on a future agenda or whatever.
So we have support for this to go on a future, well, a future work session, and we'll put it on the next work session. Does, is that agreeable?
Yeah, it's just, the, the county has expressed to us at a staff level that they're still working towards a March distribution goal deadline. So there's a lot that has to happen on the county side to get a, a program approved and in place. I, I think if you don't do it at your next agenda, the window might be closing. Or you might just need to do it individually with your elected peers in Johnson County. So I would suggest the next work session, but also want to remind you that you're entering the budget season. And historically, a lot of work session time has been taken up by budget matters, but we can cross that bridge when we get there.
All right, we'll have it on the next one. Any other items from December 16th?
I'd just like to note IP, I believe it was number two, the letter from, from HUD, Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for the year 2020. And I'd like to thank the, our NDS department, and I don't see Tracy Haichu in the audience today, but she and, is she there? Well, there she is, yes. Thank you, Tracy. You and your department do amazing work and always keeping those marginalized folks in our population in mind when it comes to housing needs. And, and so if anybody had any doubts that we as a city had been taking strides towards increasing the availability of the housing for these marginalized individuals, you need to read the, read this report. Of course, they described at one point as our efforts as satisfactory. So I'd like to see that improve a little bit more, but I, I do think it was, it was a good report. And thank you, Tracy.
I just, I actually read that with, you know, a lot of kudos to, to you and to the work that has been done. I mean, to look and to see that we overdid the target by 270% and helped 1,300 people with housing and affordability and eviction prevention is really tremendous. And I know it's more work for staff, but I know also that, you know, there's a Facebook page. And like, just to pull out that paragraph about what actually the city accomplished in terms of its work towards affordable housing, I think could be a relatively easy and fantastic way to be able to help inform the public without having to wade through a whole report. But it's right there to say, this is, these are the numbers of what we have been able to accomplish. Because I think that that is also something of a black box. So anyway, I just want to say kudos, but it also struck me, I'm like, man, you could just take that and pluck it up on, on social media, and it's easily digestible. And so, anyway, but man, congratulations, that was a really cool report to read.
I agree, and I, but I think the satisfactory is just like their bureaucratic speak. I don't think they have any other, I don't think they have any greater, they, they can, they can tell you what a great job you did, and that's like, and it's satisfactory. That's, that's as far as they go.
That's, that's exactly right. And, and Megan, to your point, that is in the works. We just decided to push that past the holidays because of the, for obvious reasons.
Utterly understandable. I just hesitated to be like, here, staff, do more stuff. But I think it could be an easy, cool thing to do.
Anything else? December 22nd info packet?
I just wanted to mention IP 2, which discusses the, the grant to the Center for Worker Justice to, to help fund, to fund an interpreter to help get some of this money out for a certain time, for a certain period of time, and I'm very happy to see that.
I was also pleased to see the allocation of funds to provide the temporary bilingual staff. And, and I want to thank our mayor Protem is no longer on our council, so I'll just, I'll speak to it to thank the CWJ for all they do in our community, to help the marginalized members of our community. And we, I think, speaking for myself, we often take for granted the ease in which we can read things in English and often forget that there are individuals who might struggle with being able to even fill out a, a simple but very important form. And this is going to be very helpful for them.
Yes, awesome. Anything else from December 22nd? And we will go on to December 30th? All right, hearing nothing. I, I probably did want to make mention since in IP, December 16th and December 22nd, since we're talking about housing, that tonight at 5:00 PM, which it has already happened, that the shelter is open. So that is very good to know. Anything else on December 30th? Council, well, we just did council appointments for boards and assignments. Does any of our previous or continuing councillors have any updates? All right, great. If none, we're adjourned until 6:00 PM. All right, great. If none, we're adjourned until six P M. the formal meeting for the city of Iowa City. And we're gonna start with roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, welcome to, uh, the first formal meeting for this twenty twenty-two year. Welcome to everyone in the audience and online at any other social media sites. We are gonna start with our first item, which is proclamations for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior believed that each individual possesses the power of self fulfillment, regardless of their circumstance, and that is the duty of all humans to strengthen communities, alleviate poverty, and harness the potential of all of us. And whereas Dr. King's dream of transforming the world into one free from discrimination, an intolerance continues in the minds of millions and has not been forgotten since his devastating death on April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, and opportunity through nonviolent means, and whereas the teachers of Dr. King can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas there are numerous ways to show service and respect to others, such as volunteering at your local hospital, donating books and games to families in need, organizing a food drive in your school, volunteering at a senior center, and many others. And whereas the city of Iowa City joins with other towns-
Look like everybody's in place. It is six P M. And it is Tuesday, January fourth, and it's the formal meeting for the city of Iowa City. And we're gonna start with roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
All right, well, welcome to the first formal meeting for this twenty twenty-two year. Welcome to everyone in the audience and online at any of the social media sites. We are gonna start with our first item, which is proclamations for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior believed that each individual possesses the power of self fulfillment regardless of their circumstance, and that is the duty of all humans to strengthen communities, alleviate poverty, and harness the potential of all of us. And whereas Dr. King's dream of transforming the world into one free from discrimination and intolerance continues in the minds of millions and has not been forgotten since his devastating death on April fourth nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, and opportunity through nonviolent means, and whereas the teachers of Dr. King can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas there are numerous ways to show service and respect to others, such as volunteering at your local hospital, donating books and games to families in need, organizing a food drive in your school, volunteering at a senior center, and many others. And whereas the city of Iowa City joins with other towns and cities across the country in tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, hereby proclaim Monday, January seventeenth twenty twenty-two to be Martin Luther King Junior Day. And Iowa City and urge all to join me in the celebration thereof, and to take this opportunity to reflect upon Dr. King's message of the principles of justice and equality for all. And to accept this proclamation is Commissioner Roger Lucella from the Human Rights Commission. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Roger Lucella. I, uh, one of the commissioners of the H R C. I am really accepting this on behalf of the incredible, uh, incredible and amazing commissioner who served on the Human Rights Commission. Dr. King gave the most famous speech that we all know. Many of us know it, have heard it time and time. But besides the speech, the word Dr. King's teaching. The teaching of Dr. King are what pushes us to embrace each other's differences and tackle challenges together and to better our community. In this community, they are a multitude of men and women whose name will never be on a history book, but they are living Dr. King's teaching. Those who work hard and never stands in front of the council to complain or to seek praise. Those who you don't see their name on local papers or election ballot. Those men and women who through countless act of quiet work do bring about changes in our community. These people are both black, white, young, old, male, female, gay, straight, and trans. They all have one thing in common. They share the love of this community. So as we celebrate Dr. King's this year, each of us need to ask one question. How am I living his teaching? What am I doing to better this community? Not just to remember his speech. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, and I'm gonna come and present this to you. And we are on to items number two through five, which is the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second, Thomas.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Thomas. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step to the mic. Seeing no one. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We are on to item number six, which is community comment. This is an opportunity for people to come and address any item that is not on the council agenda. And I invite you to sign up. And also, we ask that your comments are three minutes or less. Welcome. Please state your name and the city you're from.
Good evening. Temple Hyatt, and I'm from Iowa City. Uh, I hope everyone had wonderful holidays. Um, the families in Oxford, Michigan, um, their family, their holidays were, were probably, um, not as, as happy as, as most. Uh, I'm here today to talk about gun violence in schools, and the impact of school shootings and incidents of gun violence covered in the media never cease to alarm us with all too familiar scenes of families in schools in the aftermath of a tragic event like that that happened in Oxford, Michigan. As gun sales surged in twenty twenty, the issue of gun violence in schools continued to concern many parents, educators, students, and leaders in our community, leaving many with feelings of helplessness. But we can take action together to keep our schools safer. Here are some facts about gun violence in schools. While mass shootings in schools represent, I'm sorry, while mass shootings in schools account for less than one percent of school gunfire incidents, they represent one quarter of overall gun deaths at schools. Up to eighty percent of shooters on school grounds under the age of eighteen obtained the guns they used from their home or the homes of their relatives or friends. Fifty-eight percent of school shooters were associated with the school where the gunfire occurred, the majority of whom were current or former students. In one hundred percent of incidents of targeted school violence, there were warning signs that caused others to be concerned. And in seventy-seven percent of incidents, other people were aware of the shooter's plans in advance. We also know that gun violence disproportionately affects students of color, and that the threat of gun violence at school negatively affects students' learning. These are some facts, some of the facts that suggest that we as a community need to do more to prevent the threat of gun violence among our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this, uh, chance to come after Temple.
Please.
Um, the, the current re- my name is Lorraine Whittington, Iowa's, uh, nineteen oh seven Ridgeway Drive, Iowa City. The current reality, as Temple demonstrated, is that gun violence among school-aged children, whether at home or at school, is a community issue that is not going away unless we as adults do all we can to prevent it. We're encouraged that the Iowa City, uh, School District School Board will be considering a resolution to notify parents and adult guardians of a district expectation that firearms at home be kept secure from students and minors. This, uh, effort was presented to the Iowa City School Board. It's part of a nationally recognized gun safety program called Be Smart. Be Smart is neutral on the topic of gun ownership. It does not advocate for changes to gun laws. Rather, it emphasizes the power of each and every adult to exercise agency for the safety of children and teens in our community in five steps. B S in B, and Be Smart, or in Smart, stands for securing guns in our homes and vehicles. The M is for modeling responsible behavior around guns. Among other safety measures, this includes securing, not hiding, guns, uh, in our homes. A is for asking about the presence of unsecured guns in the homes, uh, of places where our children visit. R is recognizing the role of su- of guns in suicide. This is important because of the increased danger guns, uh, of guns in any suicide attempt. And T is for telling others about the Be Smart message. For nearly seven years, we have given well-received presentations of this Be Smart program to adult audiences in the community. We're here tonight to ask the city council to consider how we might spread this message of safety within programs where the Iowa City government interacts with parents and adult guardians of our city's youth. Um, we would certainly welcome further conversation with council members and be happy to provide more information about, uh, the Be Smart program, uh, with council members. And with that, I thank you and wish you all a very Happy New Year.
Thank you, and Happy New Year. Would anyone else like to address a topic that is Welcome.
Um, good evening, council. Uh, um, good evening, council. My name is Dan Cobble, and I would just like to reiterate the need to address gun violence in our community. Um, it's very, especially in, with Iowa City, with the gun violence that does occur here. It is something that's really important, and I think that, um, count this council in coordination with other local governmental entities could, could and should, uh, have an impact on this issue. Um, and I think that would be more, more, you would achieve more doing that than with an Bearcat or an MRAP. Um, I have several things that I would like to talk about tonight. Um, firstly, I would just like to address some things that were mentioned during the work session. Um, Councilor Burgess mentioned how coming up to this podium and addressing council isn't as effective as writing council and establishing written correspondence with you all. I would like to point out that before I came here to annoy you all, before I started coming to council meetings, I, I, I would write, and very rarely would I get a response. And it's one thing to get a response from staff. It's another thing to get response, a response from council who are at basically the head of the bull. Um, and so I would encourage council to start having those dialogues. Um, and so from your comments at the work session, the mayor and this council complained about the last meeting and how we disrupted it by repeatedly coming up to the podium to make comments about meeting accessibility. This is completely mind-boggling to me, especially because rules were followed to the T. Comments about accessibility were germane and relevant to each agenda item because they directly related to how the public engaged with them. Yeah, and our conduct may have been annoying to you, but it, it wasn't out of order. Um, and it's extremely absurd to me that this council is salty about, about the hour and a half that was added to the meeting through our comments because multiple times council was given the opportunity to, I, to raise their hand and commit to having hybrid meetings, or Mr. Mayor taking a quick recess, and, um, everybody doing it off the record. Um, so it's, it, the last meeting wasn't our result. It was the res- it was your, the inaction of the mayor and of this council is the reason why the last meeting went on as long as it did. Um, it, it, it's just astounding to me that this council talks com- has been complaining and spent the work session complaining about disrespect from the public when the conduct of the mayor, the conduct of counselors has been extremely disrespectful. I mean, y'all reap what you sow, and I would just like to encourage self-reflection. And, um, yeah, just do what you can do and be better. Thank you.
Thank you, and Happy New Year. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Noah. Uh, Happy New Year to y'all. Um, so yeah, last meeting, uh, I was asking for shelter for my friends because I have many friends who are houseless because I work on, I go, I mean, I, I deliver meals to them. I cook meals for them. I know these people, I work with these people because they are my friends, and this sa- this city is failing them for so many ways. I'm sorry, I'm really, uh, checking, um. Gosh, sorry, uh, wow, uh. I'm sorry, my brain is not working right now at all. I can't, um. Gosh, uh, what's this saying? I'm not trying to stall. I, 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 my brain is not working right now because I have said multiple times, I am disabled in the brain, and right now that is really affecting me, so I cannot speak. I'm sorry.
Thank you, and have a new, Happy New Year. Any, anyone else would like to speak during this time? Seeing no one. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is number seven, planning and zoning matters. Seven A is rezoning I W V Road Southwest. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately fifty-three point thirty-six acres from county agricultural to intensive commercial, approximately seventeen point oh three acres from county agricultural to interim development commercial, and approximately nine acres from rural residential to intensive commercial for land located west of the intersection of I W V Road Southwest and Slothhour Road. And this is, um, staff is requesting to defer this until one eighteen. So could I get a motion to defer?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. And council discussion? Or would anyone from the public like to discuss this? I, do we, we don't have to open it up to?
Deferred.
Yeah, not for deferral. All right, council discussion.
We don't have any idea.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Number eight, item number eight, landfill gas collection system expansion. Resolution improving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of landfill gas collection system expansion project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open up the public hearing, and I'm gonna welcome our staff. Welcome.
Joe Walter from Engineering, and, uh, I'm the project engineer on this, this project, so I'm gonna walk you through what we're doing, uh, with this project. So, oops, sorry. So located at the landfill, I think everybody knows where that is, west of the Interstate two eighteen, south of I W V off of Hebel Ave Southwest. So this project, as shown on that picture, is in the black with the extents in the lighter blue. It's located on the west, south, and central portions of the landfill site. The proposal's install five thousand one hundred linear feet of new gas extraction piping. This will give us a full loop around the active and closed cells at the site. It'll accommodate better lead shape and condensate removal in the existing system and this proposed system. We're adding additional cleanouts so that we have better access to the system and able to, uh, respond to any clogs or any kinds of system disruptions that, that we have. Overall, this project is an effort to have better system reliability on site, uh, with the goal of improving our compliance at the landfill with our environmental regulatory requirements that we're required to meet, both by our air permit and our solid waste disposal permits. So this project will enable more landfill gas to be collected from the newest cells, the F Y O nine and the F Y eighteen cell, as well as the new cell that we'll be starting to design this year. Future horizontal collection lines, which will go through the upper portions of the fill, as well as vertical extraction wells, which get drilled down through the existing cells, will tie into this expansion. We're opening bids later this month, uh, with the anticipated, uh, starting in March, the completion stand, substantial completion in May, final completion in June. The estimated cost was six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. I'd like to thank H D R Engineering, who designed this project for us, and there's my contact information as well.
Great. Any questions for Joe?
Joe, what kind of gas are we talking about, and what happens to it once it's extracted?
Sorry, who's speaking?
I'm sorry, that's me. Thank you.
Thank, sorry, the masks. Um, ma- landfill gas is primarily fifty percent methane and fifty percent carbon dioxide. There is some oxygen and other impurities in it, but generally speaking, it's about half methane, half carbon dioxide. The, currently, the gas is collected and we flare it at the site. We burn it.
Thank you. And, and if, maybe I missed it, but then what happens to this gas once it's collected by the system?
It's collected, and the piping is all, uh, all directed towards, with, with system pressures directed towards our flare. It's, it's burned. The, the methane is burned and carbon dioxide's burned.
Thanks.
Yeah, if council were, um, to look at, um, our carbon study when we produce that from our Climate Action Office, the burning of the methane, um, is the biggest contributor is part i- in, in terms the burning of the methane is the biggest contributor, is part, in terms of the city's footprint, you know, carbon footprint. And, and you may have recall, earlier this year, the Climate Action Commission reviewed a study that we initiated to see what kind of alternatives there would be to burning the gas. And unfortunately, nothing turned out to be economically feasible. So we're continuing to kind of explore ways to find alternatives, but in the meantime, the flaring of the gases is the best we've got right now.
Thank you.
I would add in that HDR, the, the firm that we hired to do this project was also the same firm that did that methane feasibility study. So, so they're very familiar with, with, with the site and did a lot of good work on the landfill site and the wastewater treatment plant to, to find viable feasible options.
Question for you. You mentioned that the carbon dioxide was burned, but I don't think that's a flammable gas, is it?
The methane burns, the carbon dioxide would, is, is part of, is part of the, the overall landfill gas.
So it's kind of vented?
It goes through the flare. It could, the, the, all of the landfill gas goes through the flare. So it's, it's burned. Yeah.
We love giving tours of the landfill. It may not be the best time of year to do it, but we're happy to take anybody around if you're interested.
Probably better than August.
Any other questions for Joe? Thank you. Great. And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step to the mic. Welcome.
Hi, um, two things. I would just like to encourage council and city staff just to be very cognizant of the environmental impacts of this and just being sure that everything with this is being done in the most effective and environmentally conscious way. Secondly, I would like to encourage the mayor to invite Noah on agenda item number fourteen to come up and comment if he would like to. And that would require reopening public comment at that time. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Weiner. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number nine, proposed South District Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District. This is an ordinance amending Title III, finance, taxation, and fees of the city code to add a new chapter to establish the South District Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District pursuant to the provision of Chapter three eighty-six Code of Iowa and providing for the establishment of an operation fund and the levy of an annual tax in connection therewith. Councillor Burgess did just recruit herself, and so this is a motion, could I get a motion to give second consideration, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Weiner.
And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome.
Hello. So yeah, my only, I guess, real concern with this is, issue is, is that it's going to bring cops more into the South District to harass more and more people in there. Like, I already know people who have been, who were houseless on the South District and the cops have been moving them along and to make, to make them invisible. Is this city where rather hide its problems than actually address them by helping people? So I just would say about this item is if you're going to do this, have it so you stop your cops from going around harassing people. And this new district, this, that's probably just going to be more gentrification. And that always brings more cops. So that's just, I guess, my only real concern with this. And hopefully, I mean, hopefully it helps the community. I'm sure there will be something that's fair for the community, but on flip side, that is, is this council should control their cops so they don't go and start harassing more and more people in the South District with this, which they're probably going to be doing anyways. So yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic?
Hi, um, my name is Dan Cobble, and I think that the SMID is a very good thing. I think it would have a lot of benefits to the South Side District. That said, I think that going forward with it, there are some concerns that it would be good for the city to keep in mind. Firstly, I think everybody should just be aware of gentrification, how it works and the impacts of it. I really want to be sure that whether it be residents who would be priced out with increased rent or whatever it is, be mindful of that, have supports for them, make sure nobody has to leave their neighborhood. And extend that also to business owners. Make sure that business owners, that there isn't an increased barrier for them to be able to establish shop in the South Side. I think that it would just be very beneficial. I mean, that, that's very important to the community because I think if you look at what's happened downtown, I think that some people think that downtown, it's very, it, it can be a very exclusive place to start a business. And I think that we just need to be mindful that with the South Side, as we work to improve it and make it even more beautiful than it already is, that we're making sure that opportunity is extended to all residents and business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Council discussion.
Well, I will leap into this since this is something that I have been aware of since its infancy. I know the folks who have worked to make this happen. And I think one of the things that's very cool about SMIDs is that there's no one size fits all and that this has worked very much within what exists and even down to its mission statement within the neighborhood as, as it is and how the property owners and in, in conjunction with the residents see how essentially, in the most simplistic of ways, you know, putting into a pool to help sustain its own health is going to strengthen the South District. And so certainly a generic sense of what a SMID is, can, and I was very much part of this. A little suspicious at first, but I'm, I have seen the work that's been done and where the vision is and how the different kinds of businesses and properties and property owners that are there are working together to strengthen what's there and to retain the flavor of the neighborhood while strengthening it as, as a vibrant area. So I'm pretty excited about this. You know, I'll leave it at that.
I wasn't here for the first reading because I wasn't on council yet, so I'm kind of glad that this has a second reading so I can go on record just congratulating and thanking all the people, Angie Jordan and all the people from the South District and all the people that helped them put this together and to give them like a public kudos for that work, and I'm excited to see where they take this.
All right, well, you have more readings. So with that being said, roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess. Oh, sorry, recusing herself. Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero with one recusal by Burgess. We are on to item number eleven, which is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless.
Mayor, you skipped the CPRB.
Ten.
Ordinance ten.
You know, I thought that was too quick. I saw it. Sorry about that. Item number ten, CPRB expand membership. Ordinance amending Title VIII, entitled Police Regulations, Chapter VIII, entitled Community Police Review Board, to increase the composition of the board from five members to seven. And this is first consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Alter. Sorry.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Alter, and.
You like a quick overview?
Yes, please.
A quick refresher. So this dates back all the way to December twenty-second, twenty twenty. That's when you received, or the council at the time, received a list of recommendations from the CPRB. One of those recommendations was to expand membership from five, and at the time, they said either seven or nine. Council has been working through those recommendations throughout twenty twenty-one, and this was kind of the last major one for council to, to finalize. The city council at an October nineteenth work session gave direction to staff to prepare an ordinance that would increase membership from five to seven. The council continued to stress the need for diverse membership and also stressed the importance of having someone with law enforcement experience on the board. So you can see in the packet, the memo, after that meeting that I drafted and sent to CPRB, that had the proposed ordinance change in front of it, or attached to it, excuse me. The CPRB reviewed my memo and the proposal at their December meeting. And you can see the letter they sent back to me on December fourteenth that says they approved the language that, that I prepared based on your direction. So that is what is before you today. Again, it expands membership to seven members. And it also, in, in order to help broaden the pool for folks with law enforcement experience, it removes a provision that previously restricted anybody that was employed by the Iowa City Police Department within the last five years to serve. So the way it sits right now is that if you've been on the Iowa City Police Department for the last five years, you're not eligible to serve. This removes that requirement and just says, if you're a current police officer, you are not eligible to serve. And that was the way that we attempted to, to broaden the, the pool. Happy to answer any questions. Again, this comes with a recommendation from staff and CPRB.
Great. Any questions for Jeff? Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come forth. Welcome.
Hi, um, I would, there are several things about this that are.
And please state your name again.
Oh, Dan Cobble. There are several things about this that are pretty concerning to me. First of all, the, removing the five-year waiting period for a former member of the police department to be appointed, that should be a no-no. I'm sorry, but that, I understand that they're trying to expand it so that they can have more people be involved who have law enforcement experience. I'm sorry, but even that is a problem in and of itself because, I mean, I've had conversations with former mayor Pro Tem Soli about how, when she was on the CPRB, people who had law enforcement experience, who were, who, who knew the workings of policing, they often hold up the, the process of justice for it. And, I mean, you've seen that with Steve Dollajal and Correville CPRB. They're very resistant, reluctant to hold police officers accountable. They are. It's a fact. I mean, if you see, if you observe meetings, that's a definite trend that you will pick up. And having someone who, like, less, even like, less than a week ago could have been a cop, and now they're in a position to judge one of their former, dictate whether one of their former colleagues has done something wrong, that problem is going to be amplified tenfold. You cannot have it be like that. I would even go further and say that I think that, yeah, I mean, there, the rationale for having law enforcement officers, former law enforcement officers on these boards is that they give the police mindset about these issues. But, I mean, in reality, they often hold up the process of justice. And I would encourage members of council to talk to other people, talk to former mayor Pro Tem Soli about this. It's a real issue. It's very concerning. And I think that ultimately, at the end of the day, this would harm the efficacy of your CPRB. And, I mean, that, that five-year waiting period really needs to go because, I mean, it's going to hamper, I mean, the ability of the CPRB to do its work. It's a bad, I mean, there's just a lot about this that's really bad. I mean, yeah, I think it would be cool to, I mean, ultimately, like, adding more members to the CPRB isn't a bad thing. But if you're adding more members who are cops, who worked with the cops that they're going to be having oversight over, that's messed up, and that will, again, harm the efficacy of the CPRB. So I encourage council to push back on this. And push back and make it so that these cops aren't going to be in a position to dictate whether or not they're going to get their friends in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Noah. And, oh yeah, I'm approve, uh, in, in favor of expanding it and changing the five-year wait period to, uh, no cops, former, no cops ever on the board, ever. So there's no cops on the board, like, no five-year, make that, and just no cops on the board. Cops investigate, cops. We already know what the result is going to be always and every single time. Probably, it's not every single time. Ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time, when cops investigate other cops, of course, cops aren't going to find their fellow cops guilty of stuff and wrongdoing. I mean, the blue wall of silence, you know, you know, the, the stuff about the cops, they always stick together, which, I mean, props to them for being able to have unity like that, I guess. So yeah, and I'm just going to talk briefly on a different object, because I have written up what I was sort of going to say earlier and when I couldn't speak, so this is, I'm not trying to be disruptive or whatever, I'm just.
Please do keep it to this topic.
Can I, will you, will you give me the, at the end?
Please keep it to this topic at hand.
Speak at the end of the meeting, then?
Please keep it to this topic.
Earlier. That's just what I'm asking for an accommodation.
Please keep it to this topic. That's the topic at hand.
Okay. Well, then I'm just going to bring you brief on it. This city needs to provide shelter instead of relying on third parties are incredibly inconsistent. It is January fourth, and today is the first day of their shelter. That's not okay. Like, that's, we were already full in winter. We've already had several negative degree days out. Deadly. That's all.
Thank you.
There needs to be shelter. That's not through some third party through the city because obviously Shelter House has dropped the ball year, year over year. This is not the first year that they have delayed the winter shelter. It's a year-over-year problem now. This city needs to stop washing their hands of saying, oh, it's Health Shelter House, it's Guideling, it's everyone else's problem but the own cities. When you can have a million, multimillion-dollar police department for public safety, but can't provide the most basic shelter to people who desperately, sorry, not going to hit that, who desperately need it, that is necessary. The only reason I'm taking off topic is because of earlier, as I said, so. Not being disrupt, not trying to be disruptive or whatever, just because I was unable to speak earlier.
Would anyone like to address the topic at hand? Seeing no one. Council discussion.
If I'm reading the memo correctly, Jeff, did the CPRB recommend that they wanted to allow current members?
No. No, they, they agreed with essentially my proposal, which was, we still don't allow current employees.
So current police officer could not be eligible.
But someone that has retired or resigned from the department and pursue other work or whatever could be eligible without that five-year waiting period.
Do the, the members who reviewed this draft of the ordinance, do we have any law enforcement, former or current members currently?
I may have that if you give me a minute.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't think we currently do.
We don't currently. I think I, I might have.
I think the prior chair had some, some law enforcement background. I don't believe there's anybody current.
Don King and Melissa Jensen that had some background.
Okay. So I just want to be clear, the members who are recommending this change didn't include any law enforcement, or former law enforcement members, those who reviewed. didn't include any law enforcement, or former law enforcement members, those who reviewed this ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I, I do have a little bit of history, so we had a, someone with probation, parole officer experience, served from oh-nine to seventeen. We did have an Iowa, a former Iowa City officer that served from oh-three to oh-nine. Johnson County Reserve from two stints, two thousand and seven, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. And there's a couple others. We go back further into the existence of the CPRB. So definitely some with related experience. It looks to me at a quick glance that we had, over the, the CPRB started in ninety-six, it looks like we've had three IC, former ICPD officers serve at one time or another.
So obviously, Jeff, I remember reading something about that we, as a council, could waive that as far as having a member of law enforcement.
Yes, you're still, you're not obligated to have a police officer on there. So if you've, if you've got applications and for whatever reason you decide not to, you still, you still maintain that discretion, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, I think that's right.
That's, that's written into the ordinance itself, and that's a existing language. So it's intended to broaden the pool, not force your hand.
But it has, it has struck me in, in sitting in on a number of the meetings that, that the current board sometimes is struggling to, in essence, to sort of understand what's happening or what's happening, or, or what the appropriate procedure is, or what orders they, how they should interpret a particular order, or if they should approve a particular order. I'm not sure that I'm in agreement with having no waiting period, but they, but for the, but the current members, in any, in any event, on the meetings I've sat in have indicated that they really want some law enforcement expertise on there, or they think they would benefit from some law enforcement expertise, but I'm not sure that I'm completely comfortable with no waiting period.
Yeah, just to expand on that, I think, you know, that's the key thing, and I think as you move to seven, you have to remember, if you do put on somebody with law enforcement experience in the future, it's, it's one perspective out of seven. But it is helpful when they can say, well, this is typically how maybe we trained on it, or this is how this policy would be interpreted, this would be why we, why an officer may approach this situation like that. I think that perspective is, is really important. It's not necessarily going to change the mindset of a majority of a body of seven, but I think that is lacking right now, and I think that's been pretty apparent, that, that, that police perspective can add value, and we're just missing that right now. Obviously, we've had it in the past, so it's possible, but we don't have a lot of applicants with, with police experience.
At least for me, how I see it, we have the current CPRB that is making this request to the council, and, I mean, I do know that, as Ben mentioned, in some of the meetings, it's just helpful. One of the, one of the questions that I do have is if we didn't want, want to go full, no, you know, time lapse, if we might consider even a two-year lapse of time, or a three-year. But to me, it would be two years. The, the, the other thing that we have to remember is that whoever is on council at the time reviewing the applications have the full responsibility of ensuring that the individual that will be appointed will be appropriate and for, for their appointment. And so, with that being said, I, I am, you know, supportive of it if we wanted to change. I'm, I'm supportive of it as, with no time lapse, but I can be agreeable if other people wanted a lapse.
I would be more comfortable with, say, with, let's say, a two-year cooling-off period, right? You know, that there would have to be a gap so that you don't have the direct contact with just having retired. I mean, that, that's sort of, I mean, if you look at other governments, there's, you have the famous revolving, revolving door, which becomes problematic. I think under the Obama administration, the federal government, they widened, they extended it to two years, which seemed more reasonable so that you didn't have immediate relationships and contact.
I agree with councilperson Weiner. I, I had some more thoughts that were brought up during the public comments. Not just that I necessarily think that it would be, there's, there's the, any wrongdoing, but there's also, also the issue of perception, and people have trust in our, in our CPRB. So I, I, I like the idea of some sort of a, what you call it, cooling-off period, or a gap, or, or a, or whatever you want to call it. I don't know that it has to be five years, but I think something in there would probably be good for, at least to keep community trust in, in the CPRB, and I think that's important. You know, that that maintains going forward. And then, because I'm new, procedural question, is this just a first reading on this kind of a motion, or is this a one and done?
Oh, it's the first.
Okay. Thank you.
Hearing no other comments. Roll, oh, well, I guess the question is, before we do a roll call, are we going to, I mean, I've heard at least three talking about an amendment to the time. Is there anyone else wanting to amend the time? Should this be passed?
I'm, you know, this was, the language was approved by the CRB, on the one hand. On the other, you know, I, I hear your concerns in terms of, you know, having a period in which there, you know, there is some degree of separation from serving on the force. You know, I would, I would support that, but I think we need to, you know, remember again why, why the timeframe has been reduced, and I think we need to monitor that and see if, and by putting in that two-year requirement, we may, again, end up finding difficulty, finding individuals who are interested in serving. So, you know, it's, it's a trade-off, and, you know, the, I'm, I'm supportive of the idea of the two-year grace period, but I do think we need to wa, watch this and make sure that it doesn't end up defeating the purpose of reducing the timeframe.
I would be in favor of, of going with two years. I think, I think John's concerned that, you know, perhaps if they've left the force, they've retired, or they've moved away, so they're no longer here, and that's why we're having difficulty, you know, but it could be that others from other law enforcement agencies that have moved into town. So I think two years would be a good timeframe rather than the five-year, that perhaps we could still find some interest out there in former law enforcement. And it doesn't have to be, I believe we've had before, it didn't have to be like a police department person, just someone who has knowledge or experience in, in law enforcement of some sort.
So I do hear a majority of changing the language to two years.
So if that's the desire of council, what we want to hear is a motion to amend the ordinance to, or the proposed ordinance at this point, to two years instead of five, and that would require a majority voice vote, and then we would default back to the roll call vote, if there are no other motions to amend, to the roll call vote for the underlying ordinance.
I would move that we, that we amend it to, to include a two-year waiting period.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Fergus, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passed, a seven to zero. All right, so we have the two-year, and are there any more comments about the membership expansion?
Just that I think it will help the work of the CPRB to have, to have a somewhat broader cross-section of the community there, and hopefully some people with some diverse knowledge.
All right, roll call, please.
All right, so as amended to two years. Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Onto item number eleven. Council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Eleven A, Housing and Community Development Commission. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And then I'm going to go ahead and do the second appointment, I'll read that, which is eleven B, a Senior Center Commission, and, well, let's do that one first, sorry. It's the beginning of the year, what could I say? We'll do the first one. How is it in community development?
Kelly, I was just wondering if there's a reason why, it seemed like when we last saw something for this, there were a lot of applicants. Is there a reason that that shrunk so much?
I think Laura asked me the, the same thing, and so I, I did check the previous applications, and it appears most of them were past the one-year mark. One was not an Iowa City resident. I think another one is on another commission. So it, it appears that these are the three current.
And we have a female requirement for this one.
Right. I mean, I guess, I guess, and this may not be appropriate, I guess I was wondering if we might, given the fact that there's going to be another appointment to it very shortly, because Mayor Protam had to, had to resign, if we might not go out again and, and get, and seek a broader pool and then do two appointments at the same time? It was hard to get, glean much information from these applicants.
Yeah, and I don't know if we know for sure, but I think, Kelly, you weren't sure if we'd really promoted this opening on, like, on social media. Maybe we could make a point to do that, because I, I kind of had the same reaction as Councilor Weiner, like, we normally have a lot of applicants, and, you know, there wasn't, these individuals had all kind of indicated not, knowledge of this commission, and I think it is kind of a technical one that maybe having a few more to review would be useful.
I would be open to reposting and trying to advertise for it.
I'd agree.
Sound like we have a majority for that.
With Megan not on there and this person resigning, though, does that leave the HCDC short on membership?
It would by two.
Pardon me?
It would by two.
Because I would think that if they're, they're short, and it would hinder their functioning, that it wouldn't hurt to appoint one of the three that applied currently. But that, that's just my opinion.
It's, it's a nine-person commission, so currently, then we'd have seven.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any thoughts on, on that, being that you're resigned.
I mean, it's, the current commission functions really well. I mean, yes, they're down two, but there are robust conversations, but I, I can't think of a time when, you know, it's been, when some kind of recommendation that needed a vote was split only by one vote. So the other consideration actually is that there's considerations of CDBG and home applications coming up, that honestly, if that's one of the first things that, that a new commission member would have to deal with, it's, it's a lot. It's very daunting, and it's hundreds of pages of applications and a rubric. So it might be difficult to have, based on the pool that we saw, and part of this might be what's being asked in an application, but there's very little information to, to indicate even that there was any experience from applicants about reading grant applications, let alone other experience, to understand sort of the ins and outs of, of agency needs. So my sense, would it be that the commission can be, will self-regulate and be okay? They have a great staff, and they're able to work together well. So if it is allowed for them to work a little bit, you know, I don't know. The boat's a little higher in the water because we're not, we don't have as many people on it. If that's allowed, I think that they can, can muster through without any difficulty.
The other thing I'll point out is it appears they meet on the third, Thursday of every month. That would be the twentieth this month, two days after your next council meeting. So obviously, it would be short notice to those who are appointed, but this group will actually, will not be meeting again until after your next council meeting.
Is that timeframe doable for staff to advertise a little more aggressively?
Yeah, I can push it out to communications and have them put some stuff out.
With the holidays, I, I think it might be in everybody's best interest, the public, to have a little more notice, and we can still consider the three that are there. But I'm seeing some shaking of heads, so we'll delay this one until the next council meeting, and more communication will be going out to advertise this. Onto item number eleven B. Senior Center Commission. One vacancy to fill a three-year term, January first, two thousand and twenty-two, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And we just have a no-gender requirement for this one.
And we have one, one applicant who seems quite conversant with the issues.
I was impressed by the application.
Yeah, I think we should appoint Victoria Carroll to the Senior Center Commission.
I had a question for Eric. Although she was employed by the VNA, she said she has worked there and done some of the VNA things for the Senior Center. I assume it's like the blood pressure checks and cholesterol checks. Would that be a conflict if she serves on the Senior Center Commission, if she's actually working at the center?
And I apologize, I haven't reviewed her application, but you're indicating she works for VNA, not for the Senior Center.
She said she takes classes at the Senior Center, and she has volunteered for the VNA, and the VNA just, it's separate. I mean, they do it here at the Senior Center, but do blood pressure checks and cholesterol checks and those kinds of things.
Right. I, I see that now. No, that doesn't represent a conflict.
Okay, good. Because she, she seems to have a very strong understanding of, of the mission of the Senior Center.
Seem like there's support for Victoria Carroll. Could I get a motion to appoint, please?
So move to Fergus.
Second, Thomas.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passed, a seven to zero. All right, we are on to item number twelve, announcements of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Applicants, applications must be received by five p.m. February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Second.
All, move by Weiner, second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number thirteen, announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Airport zoning board of adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport zoning commission, Iowa City representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, building design professional, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. X-Store Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we don't have you, uh, item number fourteen, we don't have USG here today. They are still on winter break, and I hope they're getting some much-needed rest. We're on to number fifteen, City Council Information. So if anyone has anything they want to mention about any, um, various meetings that they'll be attending, or upcoming meetings, community events, or any item of interest.
My only item of interest is COVID, which seems to be the, with us, essentially with us, for the long term, I would really, really, really urge people to wear masks, wear good masks, um, and, and be very, be very aware, because Omicron appears to be at least twice as infectious as Delta. So please stay safe.
I just wanted to mention an event on this Thursday. Our Truth and Reconciliation Commission is having a special, uh, guest presentation by, uh, Ron Wakabayashi, who is with the Divided Community Project. I think Janice and I have both spoken with Ron before. Um, he has a very extensive history in working with, uh, truth commissions, and also was directly involved with the reconciliation process relating to the internment of Japanese-Americans after World War II. So he'll be presenting at the, uh, Truth and Reconciliation Commission this Thursday evening at 7:00 PM, which you could view on Zoom.
He, he is incredibly impressive.
Yes, yes.
And that's recorded too, correct?
Yeah.
Great. Any other updates? Item number sixteen, report on items from the city staff, city manager.
Just a reminder that we're back at it on Saturday for the annual operating budget review. Uh, this room, 8:00 AM, uh, looking forward to a day of numbers, uh, with you.
Have lots of coffee.
All right, our deputy city manager.
I don't have anything.
All right. City attorney?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City clerk? Item number seventeen, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? We are adjourned.